And stare at it.
Welcome to study session, December twelve. Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bowden. Councilmember Sherman is absent this evening, so councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mary Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Tonight, we have community economic development director Jay Hill, along with his team, has information for us about international property maintenance code.
Mayor, deputy mayor, council, thank you very much. I'm joined tonight by our building official, Sean Carlstrom, and our code enforcement officer, Will Gano. I don't know if you've met Will, he's fairly new to us, but he's been doing good work out there, but you've probably met Sean before. Thanks. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the International Property Maintenance Code. We have a presentation in which can go to free flow questions and answers. And then we'll shift into a discussion about the height limit. We were requested to bring a presentation about, you know, should we, could we, and if we did raise the height limit, what does that look like? And then we'll have some other items after that. So I'm going to let Sean lead the presentation, and Will and I are here to jump in on, you know, specific things related to code enforcement, or how it relates to zoning and some of the other practices that we have. So.
All right. Are we gonna?
Yeah, you said the problem.
Mark, do we want to announce early that we're going to have a new item? At the end, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have a under D one, we're gonna have a discussion on appeal process.
Some conflicting language within this.
All right. Well, the property maintenance code. The introduction, what is? The provisions of this code shall apply to all existing residential and non-residential structures, equipment and facilities for light, ventilation, space, heating, sanitation, protection from the elements, a reasonable level of safety from fire and other hazards, and for a reasonable level of sanitary maintenance. Created the International Code Council. These codes were first adopted by reference by the Washington State Legislature in nineteen seventy four, and in nineteen eighty five, the legislature delegated the responsibility of adoption and amendment of these codes to the state building code council. We did a little looking and finding out where else in Washington State where jurisdictions have adopted the property maintenance code and together this list of Bellingham, the road, Tomwater, Kent, and Black Diamond. Bellingham is noted up there as there was a source that rated them in the top five cities to live in in the United States, not just Washington. They attribute that to their adoption of the property maintenance code and requiring that the community be, continue to be clean and free from hazards. So the two thousand twenty one international building code is the main code, everything else kind of falls below that. And it's more or less the meat and potatoes. But the international existing building code regulates the repair, alteration, change of occupancy, additions, and relocation of existing buildings where if we adopt the property maintenance code, that would be extended to existing structures and premises. Premises being the property equipment and facilities, light, ventilation, space, heating, sanitation, life and fire safety hazards, responsibilities of the owners of the property, operators and occupants, and occupancy of existing premises and structures. So enforcement, the code enforcement officer will respond to the complaints and do the follow up. Building official provides technical assistance. And the director issues the abatement order. So when we receive a complaint, that would typically go to Will. And he would then perform an investigation. And if there are any findings, then he would notice the property and provide them with an opportunity to cooperate. And sorry, I.
Voluntary compliance.
Yeah, sorry.
Always voluntary compliance, whether it's potential adoption of the National Property Management Code, or it's the new code, but we're dealt with that, right? We would reach out to the property owner, much like we did in fourteen eleven, and say, hey, you have the opportunity to correct this, these violations. If you don't, then we'll proceed through that in the process.
And then if that doesn't work, the property maintenance code will help with the we would write the written violation description and statement of the violation of why the notice is being issued. Of course, voluntary correction order allowing reasonable time to make repairs. And then if that doesn't work, would that go through the appeal process and statement of the right to file lien on the property? And what about vacant building registration? The property maintenance code does not have section or offer of means to address building registration, but we can do that through the with our permitting process.
And that's something else to add to the discussion is some other communities, Aberdeen, and a couple of others have set up a process where if you have a vacant building has to be unregistered, has to be certain requirements, and it's be boarded up, there has to be a fence, there has to be regular maintenance and monitoring, there has to be a registered owner has to have a contact number, has to be with the police department, so they can notify them. There's a whole process, basically, to make sure that buildings don't just fall off the radar, become occupied, become even larger hazards, kind of like what we see in these properties. It requires a little bit more work and staff's part to kind of track and follow and maintain that, but we've been kind of doing something like that with, for example, two twenty six seventh, that one that burned, just a couple blocks from here. We've kind of been following up on that because it's in such a prominent location. We've got a contact number for somebody, and so we can call them, like, you need to come get the graffiti off, you need to reboard up the windows, et cetera. And so IPMC doesn't include that specifically, but I know there's been discussion about, should we consider something like that? We just wanted to bring up, this isn't the tool for that, but that tool is something that we but I should consider.
Thank you. What does it do and who does it apply to? It, well, it regulates the minimum requirements and standards for residential and non-residential structures. Again, light, space, heating, protection from the elements, safe egress routes, potable water, ventilation, sanitation, fire hazards, accessibility. And the benefits to using it. Property maintenance code helps to establish minimum requirements to provide a reasonable level of health, safety, and property protection and general welfare of our community as they affected continued occupancy and maintenance of structures and premises.
And just for an example of kind of like the more specific context of the code, like on space eating, for example, it says that you need to be able to keep the building at sixty eight degrees inside, a minimum of sixty eight degrees year round, presumably through the winter. Trying to like prescribe some detail. So if somebody were called, be like, I live in this building, landlord doesn't have any heat turned on, it's forty five degrees in here, and my kids are freezing, like, there's a method for enforcement to be substandard housing conditions that unfortunately, we're seeing a little bit more of, and we don't really have a way to address some of those specific conditions. There's, there's some building code remedy, but it's more appropriate.
No question. Yeah, so several years ago, we talked about, it was quite a while ago, we talked, and I'm sure you remember this, Mark, and talked about inspecting people's residential houses. If we're suspect that the inside of the house is not safe. For instance, you have a whole bunch of air conditioners and windows, and they're all, you know, two of them are plugged into one outlet, you know, that type of thing, which is dangerous. Is that kind of what you're looking at here? Going into people's residential homes and checking them, or? Or?
Didn't you know, it's not like proactive, like, we're going to start knocking on doors to go into everybody's house. It's one completely driven, really.
So if I chose to live that way, they'd probably never come to my house, but if I rented my house to you and I made you live that way, you could call them.
Okay. It's the rental owners that own it.
Analogy, or, or, you know, the let's take, since it's the topic of the day, fourteen eleven river. If, if that property starts sliding, if you will, right, if, if the roof is degraded, and the paint starts degrading, because windows broke up or something like that, that can be addressed before it comes to full abatement. To the property maintenance code, we can, we can address that property before it's a full tear down. It becomes more of a blight in the community, it becomes more expensive, right, for maybe abatement or the property owner at that point. And it's hopefully put into use and put into housing much, much quicker than that, that property is going to be.
And was that rental, correct? Or were they swallowed? Because we weren't able to get a hold of the owner, correct?
It's a long and sordid tale. I don't, I, I. Okay, the, the short version, it started as a rent.
Okay.
And, and then was it after a while?
Okay.
Essentially, the property owner wasn't able to maintain structure or contact, if related, manages property anymore, then it became a property owner's slide situation.
So back at the beginning, I don't expect you both to go back to this first slide, but you talk about residential having the he- heat and and ventilation and all that. But these are houses that are already here, because new house built, of course, have all that. So these are houses that are already here. Is it a suspect? Like, it would have to be reported by someone that the ventilation bad? All that?
It, it would be if it's on the inside of the wall.
Okay, all right.
Now, if there's blindingly apparent issues with the outside of the house, the biggest one around here is water intrusion. Then that leads to mold and, and the other problems, the decay, or, or, you know, the roof that is in disrepair. And then we see.
Now, we see a blue tarp on Google Earth for the last three years at the Pine Garden Apartments, right? Like, we can do something about that now. Whereas in the past, we'd have to wait for a resident to complain to us about it, right? Which we weren't getting those.
That doesn't necessarily fall within our nuisance code right now. That tarp on a roof doesn't necessarily fall in the.
But we know when people are living that residence, that that's an unhealthy and unsafe situation, but especially, again, it's been multiple years or whatever. It's not like it's not reasonable.
And in front of Sean is the IPMC, just for your, it's not, you know, it's, it's, it's not a big area of binding. So just for, I guess, context in the depth, I guess, if you know, so.
Now, gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, PD goes in there and they see something, and then they report it to us because they were there for a legal reason, they were responding to something, and then they're like, yeah, this outlet has like twenty five things in it, and it is a safety violation, it was witnessed by law enforcement officers lawfully doing their job, and that could get us into the house, correct? But we're not going to go knocking on doors and being like, hey, we'll go to turn around.
Right.
Can we, can we maybe talk, and I know it's a good time to do that, but can we maybe talk about the complaint based approach? Because I think what I have heard, at least the feedback that I've done, is, you know, typically, when we have these issues, like, why is the city use about fourteen eleven most relevant, it's like, fine, we'll complain. Why do you need a complaint? It's obvious. Yeah, I'm good, good point. It's obvious from the street, deal with it, like, right? Let's, let's deal with it. Let's give you guys the teeth to clean up the community that has been asked to clean up for the last hour.
The lowest in this case, yeah. And part of the problem too is that our, our ability to enter property, like, even just to enter the property itself, not even the structure, is fairly limited. Without authority to do this, it gives us a little bit more statute of authority to actually investigate some of these situations. Where, you know, otherwise, it's entirely voluntary compliance. Now, you can say, hey, we're here from the city, we have a complaint that we need. So it gives us say, a, a more coercive kind of thing, but that's kind of the necessary option. Sometimes, you know, we don't get voluntary compliance, we were seeing that right now. So this gives us an option to, to, you know, a different.
And well, well, maybe also, excuse me, what? I think what is most effective measure is if that personal contact is go up and knocking on door and saying, we have a code violation, you know, or this issue, I might not be even aware that it's a violation. Or is it a letter, you know, or citation sent out, even by, by information, it's going to be different with every property owner, right?
Of course.
Particularly if it's a rental or absentee property owner, rather than occupied structure.
Right. If it's owned or occupied by a structure, then I'm all about knocking on doors and educating people and being like, hey, I need to bring this to your attention. But with, like, they're renting the property, then I'll go direct with the property owner. I'll be like, this is your property, it's your responsibility to keep this. And, you know, hear your consequences if not. But all about voluntary compliance.
Glad you brought that up, and we had an issue on Washington Street where we had a property owner fairly distant from maybe the tenant, but you know, we had some, I'll be honest, you know, we had some aversion to pressing on the property, right? Because we felt it's not the property's fault, it's a bad tenant in there that's caused the problem, and, you know, but it's their property, right? They own it, right? They, they, that the tenant, they're responsible for the tenant, their behavior. Happens later, I think they are the property, I understand that. It's unfortunate sometimes, right? It's not necessarily always their fault. So it's, it's when we do go through this process, do we provide the property owner with the right support when they do have landlord tenant issues, right? You have the benefits to it, I don't, I don't know. But I do remember that being, you know, kind of a contentious issue where, you know, where let's educate more, let's continue to try to communicate more, let's, you know, versus walk through it, kind of your ask, tell, make process, right, which I'm a fan of.
At the, at the end of the day, the property owner is responsible for any leave that might be placed on the property. So I think it'd be in their best interest to address that forthright and make sure that, you know, we're providing as much information as possible, if it gets to, if it gets to the point of citation.
Well, and hopefully that's to their benefit as well, because hopefully, we're, if they aren't here, and they aren't seeing it, they may have no idea that their property is being treated in that condition either, so, I mean.
Or they're trying to evict somebody, and the courts are just ridiculous, I'm in this state, evicting anybody, sometimes it's a year or two. You can, you don't have to evict somebody. I mean, I've got, they didn't pay me rent for three years. You know?
You're still responsible.
Yeah, you know, so, I mean, sometimes it's not easy to get somebody out and clean your place up, you know?
Thank you. Next slide. Talk a little bit about what we've already been talking about, not intended to punish the residents, but.
So what does it not do? The adoption of the property maintenance code is not intended to punish residents. In fact, the goal of the city is to achieve voluntary compliance. However, if voluntary compliance is not achieved, the property maintenance code can be a valuable tool that will affect it effectively help the residents and the property owners to not become so far out of compliance that compliance becomes burdensome and feel impossible for residents to achieve. And addresses minor maintenance issues before they become slated for abatement due to cost prohibitive irreversible structural issues.
Issue, councilor, and just an example of that.
I was like, I don't know, every, sorry, it's kind of more informal, free thinking discussion, right? But every time a building has to get raised, I ask, how did that happen? Why did that have to happen? Right?
Yeah.
You know, every time we have to bulldoze something, how did we, like, get that bad? What, what could we have done to help the property owner? What could we have done to enforce on issues? I don't know, right? Like, because the cost of construction, new construction versus rehabilitation of existing, right? Like, right? And so we're trying to kind of help people in a way. We're trying to kind of make this right. It's not an overreach, in my opinion. It's not an over, it's not over extension of government, it's not over regulation, it's my family or your family, we deserve to live in a safe and healthy place, just like, you know, we want to deal with crime and other issues, like, this is, this is part of it, you know? The rats and other issues are crawling around the community, we talked about that, it's probably the biggest conversation you've ever had, rats and cats, right?
Right, yeah.
Chicken, chicken cat.
And to add, and to add on to that, so like in downtown, for example, we have a mixed use building that, when we, I mean, we went up to the top, and we could see that there's grass growing in this flat roof, where the water had been pooling and collecting, and then the water had found its way into the building and completely rotted out a bunch of the timbers, and made it a safe situation for the thirty five people living inside. So it's in our interest to catch that stuff early and fix that early before we have to condemn a building, and thirty five families in it, you know?
Even impeded alleyway. Right now, because of dereliction of the maintenance of property.
Wasn't maybe specific buildings, but yes.
Yeah. I can name the specific land, exactly. Yeah, we had, we had, and that, that's access to the rest of the public that's cut off, and, yeah, whatever, emergency services, et cetera, et cetera.
I kind of forgot what those could have, oh. Well, maybe, I, this is kind of what I was thinking, probably seven, eight, six, seven years ago, we had some, I think Steve Goine was here, and he presented some different structures around town that was like, just.
In our top ten abatement lists, right?
Yes, yes. How many of those have we dealt with?
We have to go back and look, I think the majority of them were either dealt with by a city or through a property, that could be existing property or a new property owner, yeah.
Well, we have to accommodate those as well.
There are several on that list, yeah, and we developed staff, we developed that list, put it out publicly, frankly. And then kind of, there might have been a little bit of social shaming, but there's also some abatement done by, by the city, and we have made that a priority in the twenty twenty four budget, and budget eighteen thousand dollars for it in twenty twenty four, so this is, this is a priority for, that this council has had for it.
Yeah, but I'd also say, in a perfect world, which we don't live in, but in a perfect world, the city wouldn't have to have an abatement fund because it wouldn't get to that point. I think that's the whole goal of this, right? It's like, how do we catch things early and do it in a way that is making people safe and making sure that people can take care of their property? One of the things that does come to mind, though, is I can think of a couple of specific residential structures that have gone downhill significantly due to the age and physical capacity of the residents. So one of the questions that I would ask is, is there a way that we could partner with some of the agencies that we know have programs, whether it's, you know, I know Habitat has some programs, and some other folks, so that there's an avenue to help people who don't either have the technical interest or the physical ability to make those improvements, and I'm sure there's financial implications as well. But the longer it goes on, the harder it's going to be to come back from that. So how can we rally as a community to provide them with a, a way to navigate through some of those resources?
Just going to say, I was, I attended a a roundtable today, and there were some home repair options, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, US Department of Agriculture, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and Small Business Administration that that offered some home repairs.
Right.
This is, this is, there is, federally.
Sure.
See, I think it's important for us to have some of those resources, because the, the sad complaints are going to be that example.
Right.
We're, we're going in there to somebody's roof that's tarped, and it's been tarped for two years, but it's an eighty five year old person on social security, owns the home, is barely keeping up on their taxes, and how do we not make them do it? Because we're allowed to, but how do we make them do it?
How do we help them to get there, right?
That they're remaining their house.
Yes, that's the, that's the ideal, like, worst situation that we can run into. It, it's different when it's just a slow mo.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure that as we're navigating this process, we're thinking about, of course, like, the resources you're talking about, Mayor and Esteban, but also there's state and county, and even local folks that have stepped up and created ways to help their neighbors. And so if there's a way that we can, I guess, sir, I don't think that it is the city's function to monitor that process, but I think if there's a way that we can create some sort of a resource, and that would be something that would help in those, those cases.
I know we've done junk vehicles and early vehicles, because there's some value in those, that's all, you know, like steel, so obviously, we provided a resource if somebody has a vehicle on their site, they're not able to take care of it, there's people out there that'll come, you know?
You know, I think that to United Way doing cleanup on Coates, and I think back to when, I mean, that's many moons ago, but like, the high school students used to literally build a house, like, we have people within our community that have skills, and there's an element of community service in it. And so while I don't want those programs to be abused, and I don't think it's the city's responsibility to, you know, manage that process, I do think it's important that we're partners in creating a system that helps our vulnerable population to address these things, because that's not the goal of this, like, that's exactly what we're talking about. We're not trying to punish people, we're trying to help people get to where they need to be and be safe.
And I, I like the idea of putting together, like, a resource page and kind of directing people to what they can find. We've offered dump vouchers in the past from either United Way or from Mason County Public Health. We had a community cleanup event, like, we're, we're trying to be more proactive in helping people. I like the idea of collecting that. Nice to share that, so.
Yeah, we, we, you know, for the first couple of few years, since eighteen, we had the free dump days. And I'll be honest, you know, I expected to see lines down the street, you know, with dump trailers, pickup trucks, full of stuff, right, to get rid of, it's free, right, get rid of it. And, you know, turnout was low, right? And so we gave that a shot a few years, now we kind of need to stick, right? Get there, we'll provide you the free dump, right? But you gotta, you gotta clean up.
Our community cleanup events in May, we had two, two weekends that we did that. We took five dump truck loads, about ten tons were the garbage. Just for reference, we already took five dump truck loads off of the fourteen eleven property. We have seven, or seven, sorry.
Seven yard dump trucks?
Yes, sweet. And, and there's still more to go. So, I mean, it's, it's just, so when we have these cleanup events, we should be really hoping for larger volumes. Yeah, but we'll, we'll try again next year.
And it's a way, you know, I remember we talked about this, it's kind of like, can you, instead of just saying, hey, it's a community wide cleanup event, kind of like, go knock and talk, give the hand of a voucher. You can throw it out for free on May first, right? Expect to see your license plate on the voucher, you know, or whatever.
We, we had very strongly suggested that knocking, we, we did that this year.
You did, okay.
Give people postcards, like, hey, just by the way, you should.
That, how did that go? How'd that go over?
A, a few of the people received it and actually came down and brought their trash.
Oh, great.
I mean, I will say five, not very many.
But you got surprised.
A few, I mean.
And I'm fully planning on this year, with the problem the properties that I'm dealing with and everything, encouraging them, hey, it's free, the city's going to help you out so we don't get further into the older thing. But like I said before, I like to talk to people and just convey what we have to offer, instead of just sending mailers or whatever.
The most effective practices in my experience here, you know, thirty years in the city, shall have been just, well, described. It's, it's the diligence of city staff to knock on the door, come back a week later and say, hey, I thought we talked about getting rid of this stuff, you need, you know, how much time do you need? You, you put it back on them a little bit, but it's being diligent, and it takes time, you have to go out to this, sometimes these properties multiple times. So when they know that you're not going to walk away, right, and turn your back on it and not, not return, that's when it does get addressed. When we're, you know, we're kind of bulldogging these, for, you know, for lack of a better term, we get, we get compliance. We get action.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, that resonates because there's, I met a, met a gentleman at Non-Development Expo two, three years ago, and he's a videographer, he does a lot of film for, for cities and counties and stuff to try to market. And, and he, actually, one of the, one of the films in Korea, I highly encourage people to watch it, it's called Small Town Spirits, about Menneson, Pennsylvania. You know, steel, tin, steel, that, that steel area, you know, depressed economy, everything rusted out for many, many years. Code enforcement was what dug that city out of. Was what dug that city out of. They had declining population issues, right? Not just revenue problems. They had people moving away, literally, in roles, right? And. Uh, the film highlights the investment the the city made and hired code enforcement and bolstering. Things like property maintenance codes and what it ultimately kind of did, like the five I got from the video was. It highlighted what this city could be. When you were going through this and explaining to people when they were doing the knock and talks and saying, hey, you should clean this up because like, this this could be great. This could be this or this to generate this buzz or this attraction. Some people have just been. You know, so burned out with depressed economy and depressed era. That just that glimmer of hope and that, that discussion at the doorstep, whatever, was up to get people to start investing and. Turning things around. I don't know where they're at today, brawling out. Uh, but but the story is very positive. Um. And it it kind of explains exactly what you guys are going through with voluntary compliance and educating people in the community. But then creating kind of that mechanism where they can't get it. The education isn't working. If we have something we can do. Right? I think it's great.
Yeah, these are just a couple possible scenarios. I think we could all drive around town and find issues like these.
Is that B Street?
No, the both of these were just pulled off the web.
Because, I mean, there's a junkyard on B Street. I mean, I'm surprised we can't. Do that right now, today, walk up there and say, this stuff needs to go or. But. We've got to have code without adopting somebody else's code. That addresses issues like that. I mean, I'm all for cleaning up places like B Street and stuff like that. I'm not sure I'm excited about adopting a code written by somebody else. That I want to read first, by the way. I'd like to read the whole book and and see what what's in there. But I mean, if we have certain issues we want to address, why don't we write our own code for these certain issues? I just want to make sure we're not making people mow lawns that are three inches long and. You know, I, and the rough issue that James brought up, how do we take care of a eighty year old couple that can't afford a thirty two thousand dollar roof? And uh, um, and that is a reality today of a roof, twenty to thirty thousand bucks. Um, what do we do?
So a little bit, we have a nuisance code, right? So it address, it addresses tall grass, it addresses uh. Junk vehicles, you know, um, whatever, trash, trash in the in the yard, things like that, standing water. And it's not, it's not a real bust.
And it doesn't include any standard, right? It's just a, a, you know, uncapped vegetation to, you know, it 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 doesn't really go into detail.
If it's a nuisance to me, it's a nuisance no matter what it is.
We have to define that within our code so we can, we can consistently. I know, I love that. The the good thing about having a, the IPMC already written. It's much easier to adopt, less work for us and for attorney to develop those codes. I fully understand. And maybe there's portions of it that can just be conveyed and, you know, and adopted as amendments to the code, but. You know, those decisions that were, why we're here tonight, get further information from the council.
And also there's the opportunity to do local amendments. So if you want to change a. You know, tweaks and dials and things, you know, what we consider our local standard. If we want to adopt a section or not a particular section, we can.
And and I'm all for looking at um scenarios where we have. Mo- multi-family units and they're not safe. I mean, we should already be dealing with that or somebody should be, whether it be the health department or the. Fire department or somebody should not, you know, part of the problem was not happening. This hours now. Yeah, so. It should, right? Should be a code out there already that deals with that, though. Gotta be.
Well, I think we talked about the the existing building code and and, you know. Deals with the structures themselves, right? Um, the the framing, it's, you know, the insulation. As far as the uh energy code, this this takes a little bit further and talks about how the building can start degrading. From code enforcement side, this actually dials in. And gives me like the elements of proof, instead of just being like uncapped vegetation. You may not think it's uncapped vegetation, Captain. Councilmember, it's how I think that it is. This will be able to dial it in and say, hey, this is what. The understanding is, so I have a go by. So I know how to enforce it.
And you said something actually important and I think we should talk a little bit about it, but at some point it will come to meeting court. Right? And then, you know, you've got to present your side, they've got to present their side, and the judge has got to make a determination. He means they need some, something, right?
Well, I think that's a theme of what we've been talking about, well, at least since twenty eighteen. Clarity in the process, predictability in the process and being clear about the expectations on both sides for staff and for our community. And so. I agree with Maranisco. I think we need to take a deep dive and make sure that. Everything in there or the pieces that we want to adopt makes sense for us. But I think the concept of taking this into the next step of. Setting the community standard and and being clear about what we qualify as a, the standard of living for our community is something that's really critical. And having that done in a measurable way. Day to grow hair. I I appreciate the fact that there are some really specific. Instances, so it's not that gut feeling of that's not, you know, I don't think that's gonna pass muster, but. You know, my husband and I maybe have different ideas about what that looks like day to day. I'm sure those conversations happen all throughout the community. So um, you know, I I see there could be a kickback of. I didn't move into an HOA for a reason. I don't want people to tell me what color to paint my house. That's not what this is. And I think it's really.
Oh, we don't know that. We haven't read it yet.
Well, it's painting, yes, it's color, no.
Um, so, yeah, sure, maybe your house needs to be painted for this code.
Right.
It's be painted in a rainbow, right? It's not telling you what color, you know, it's it's it's. It's pretty uh, uh, you know, it's pretty raw wood that, you know, happens. And to be completely transparent, we address this with the Development Committee. Twenty one.
Yep.
Um, and some of the same discussions, right? How far is this going to go? Is this gonna go too far? Where it is? Um, you know, my grass is six inches tall or something, you know, maybe there's a paint fleck on the backside in the backyard and.
Right.
You know, you're going around looking over, looking over the uh. Over the, over the fence for that. We don't have the time, we don't have the energy, we don't have the will for that, correct? I think that's not the intent here.
But I.
Only demonstrate that. Probably not to everybody. In the community, there's always going to be doubters, there's always going to be people thinking that this is going to be taken too far. But truly, if you look at our code enforcement practices over the last. Let's just call it five years or ten years, we're not gonna have the proactively uh address it to that degree.
How how many homes have been lost due to a structure fire because of something related to the property issues, right? And that's, there's a rooftop that's lost a family that's displaced. I mean, I was a volunteer firefighter for like five years, right? And I can tell you that. Really nice houses don't. Right? Like, right? So the unkept, unmaintained, you know, the multiple outlets people are plugging things into or whatever the issues are. You know, yeah, I mean, a lot of times you were stepping through piles of garbage. You know, it was unfortunate. And then again, you have displaced family, you have a rooftop that now has lost revenue, you know, it's not really a big old house back there. I don't know, I mean, over by the hospital, but it's been a burnt, burnt down home for two years, three years, maybe more than that. You know, it, yeah, time flies, right? But we're, we're sitting there and it's on the corner, right? You know, it's just sit there, vacant, empty. We have a housing crisis right now. People need a place to live, and I'm assuming there's probably people living in there.
And and right, and we have neighbors that would like us to address these situations. I think we've received a call about that, sure.
Yeah, sure.
Within the last. Couple months asking for the city's help in addressing that a specific issue.
Yeah, and I gotta believe we assume a bunch of liability. We go, especially if we go in red tag. And then we don't go back and make, make sure it's secure, you know? And so I'm like, construction fencing around the property and secure the property.
Is that an insurance issue sometimes too, when the houses that have burnt? The insurance companies just take, because the house over here. Withburg was living in the White House.
Behind the Journal.
Yeah, behind the Journal and then this one over here on Seventh. Yeah.
But if you want an insurance company to help, you know, if you want an insurance company to move. A citation from the home are would, might be helpful, right? I mean, I'm not saying you have to hammer on people if they're hard times, but they, you know, insurance companies aren't gonna pony up or they're gonna drag their feet, you know?
Well, make thing with a couple of those too, because I I know it was too specific in town recently. It it's that the insurance company will pay out, but everybody wants to rebuild. But then they realize what it actually takes to do that. Gosh, I don't have the the means and the time. So sometimes those do sit for quite a while because they, their intent is they want to do something with it. But the reality is something different.
And in my mind, that's what. The benefit is in this is that hopefully we're catching things before it gets to that state, right? So we're avoiding getting in that. Now I'm doing a full rebuild. Now I'm bringing things up to the new code because we have historic beautiful places here, but I mean, this place has been. You know, built out over. What, less hundred and? It didn't happen overnight, so we're having different issues in different parts of town. And so um, I think recognizing that the alternative is. That house gets to a place where now the rebuild is not financially a possibility for a developer. And then we have more city lots that are not generating revenue, not providing housing, not having a purpose. And that's not what any of us want to see.
Well, I was, I, in that, in that scenario, I I wouldn't mind seeing something um that an insurance company has to. Regardless, has to remove a burnt structure, a total structure.
I think we're getting the world.
No, I don't. Uh, no, I don't think so, because if a person can take the money and run away and just leave it, then what do you do? Then we got an abatement process. It's gonna cost us eighty thousand dollars.
That's not the insurance reason, yeah, responsibly. They can't help it.
There's any model out there or if there's a, there's.
But that's what's happening.
State or federal laws that prohibit us from, you know, depending on, I know um. E Street, I don't know the address specifically, but that was bank ownership.
Yeah.
Um, it's still under bank ownership. They've actually contacted the city asking for us to release the lien that is uh. Yeah, and so they 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 contacted the city. They wanted to sell the lot. It's a nice one, a lot flat above Mount Mea wants to release the lien so they can sell the property. All the while, the bank did not address the code enforcement issues on that property when, when, you know, there was a tenant living.
He could have made a.
Yeah, absolutely right. So during the claim, you know, some of these companies have been claiming um, maybe. You know, whatever it might be, lack of information or, you know, unknowingly, you know. That the property was falling into disrepair. At the end of the day, we had an expense on that property. Um, they certainly have more means than we do as banks and insurance companies, so. We have, we have our constituency to take.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. But it's just, it's just vacant. The bank still owns it. That's the interesting part. They have, they have a lab that'll be sitting there. There's a valuable lot in the city's uh shelving.
Be ready to probably two houses.
They're willing to sit on it.
Yeah, I I don't think I've said this before in the past. We 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 do things as a council for good reasons, but we're not going to be here forever. We're gonna be gone and somebody down the road is gonna, is going to read something that we adopted and. You know, and overreach. That's why I want to make sure that, you know, before we adopt another book, it's not a very big book, but another book that. We know what's in that book and and we're comfortable with it, that somebody will interpret it down the road the way that we want it interpreted. Or they can change it themselves, you know, because uh. You know, I mean.
We certainly don't want to be the. You know, we don't want to be the heavy handed uh city staff that are just coming, coming out to a property and saying, here's your problem. Here's your citation, see you later, have a nice day.
But I think to Mayor Nisco's point. You were nothing worried about, right? We, like that whole, since it's made good neighbors, the whole point is like, we have to, yeah, I hope not. Um, but we have to interpret for like. You know, out to the nth degree, what does that look like? And are we comfortable with that or are we not? So. Yeah, absolutely. I I think it's something we look at, but I think the concept, I think the direction absolutely makes sense. Um, and again, as long as we're having a more holistic approach, I'm comfortable with moving forward.
And that is what we're here for tonight is to to get direction for the council. If there's at least enough interest to. For us to prepare, you know, what ordinance would look like, what, you know, get it before you and then then we can have those.
Are we able to get this information scanned to us? Because I I would definitely like to read it.
I'm still concerned about how the process all starts, but right now it's just complaint based, right? And. A lot of the complaints have different ideas of what beauty is, right? So like, I might have a really beautiful bushy plant that flowers, but it looks ugly in the winter, you know? So, you know, you know, talking about, and then there, I have some PTSD because. A lot of my neighbors use code enforcement to hammer each other and make someone come out to look at their stuff so they can get them for stuff. You know what I'm talking about? So um, and it becomes a back and forth and it's like old beef from like when they're in high school, you know, so I'm like. Um, then then we're gonna add on and say, hey, that's not code, we're the city and we decide what's beautiful. So that's my big brother. Like um fear, that I'm sure a lot of us have. So that's my concern. And like, how do we, how do we start the process? Or is it just a plaintiff? Is it the city? Is it both? Is it gonna be? Um, laser focused on exact, you know, well, it's three point seven five inches, not three inches, you know, so. Um, those are the things that I think everyone has a fear about.
I think we'll be able to provide you theatrical copy and you'll be able to see examples of how how it's written and get a better understanding of of. The true, the true, the true intent, you know, you you you're seeing kind of a thirty thousand foot.
I'm just concerned about how it's gonna get used, but if we promote people to start calling up and making more complaints. People are gonna be empowered to like, that person's shining a light and. You know, so, I mean.
Yeah, that's it. Start with the, it starts with the city gonna have to decide. If it's a, it starts with whether it's safe or if it's pretty.
That's why having clarity though makes it to where you, we make it feel less weaponized because we do have that clarity, that it is six inches. So you are at nine inches, so you are over, you are at six and a half, you are over. We have a standard that's held across the line.
I don't want to be him out measuring grass with a statement.
But I mean, just like, but we have to have that, because once again, it can't just, I feel your guard is too long. It has to be, we have a standard of what a bomb.
And it's equally applied.
So then, because anything like this with enforcement gets weaponized, it it does.
And we're also moving towards more natural lawns and not. Not.
You're not within the standard, it's clear, and then we provide that standard.
And with limited staff, we will prioritize how how these issues come about, right? So if if we get a complaint or we get a, you know, a my civic, uh, you know, um, whatever, uh, ticket filed and it's. Six inches of tall grass, or if the, you know, the burnt out house on the corner is in Florida, you know, where are we gonna spend our time, right? We're gonna go to that, that first, then priority is gonna go down until we have time. My guess is we won't have a lot of time to outmeasure grass.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, so should be entered, that's that's up, that's up to.
But you don't have to measure it when it's this tall. Literally, my neighbors, you know, their their lawn gets this tall. I don't have to measure, I just have to call Will and I'll say, you know, hey, Will, that's grass is tall. Dead up summer, it's dry. And if a match gets thrown in there, it's gonna be bad news for the neighbors.
What, and Mark, you mentioned that the steering code development committee had had some conversation on this. So if there's any feedback from that group. Or master builders or development community that is pertinent to this conversation, it'd be nice to have that on the earlier side than the.
Absolutely. Yeah, I will, I'll check my notes again. Uh, it it revolved around. It's the same conversation we had, we're having here tonight, right? It was the exact same conversation. It might have been about a window rather than grass, but. It was the same ten or other.
Hey, developers uh build uh planning developments subdivisions all the time and they covenant homeowners associations. And they have architectural standards and everything else, so. It happens. It happened in nineteen ninety six when they built my, my neighborhood off of Rockdale Road. They had a set of standards that they wanted the neighborhood to look and feel like, and that was back in nineteen ninety six in Shelton. So this is not a foreign concept. Uh, this is not something uh, you know, atypical of other cities. I mean, I know you threw up a few that have adopted a code. Um, but uh, you know, this, this type of thing, creating a community where people want to live, it's attractive. Uh, it's been around for a long time. So uh, we're just trying to put some teeth in it so we can get there.
This answers all of our questions. How does the IPMC improve our current? The IPMC provides us with the ability to administer the codes effectively and equally among the residents. Of our community, which also in turn helps to bridge the gap to serious structural. Issues and flexibility. What outcomes will we see?
Uh it will, the adoption will effectively eradicate the spread of rodents, roaches, mosquitoes and the diseases that they bring. Um and we'll also see maintaining safe neighborhoods, putting value into the community and increasing the home values. And resource pride in ownership and the community.
Who's ready to sign?
The broken windows. So if you're going to broken window syndrome or scratching your vehicle, you get your first scratch, guess what? The second one's none, you know, when you tend one is that whatever. So broken windows, it was just that. If let's address the first broken window and the second, the third and the fourth are less likely to be just kind of.
Yep. Similarly, we address this during graffiti. Graffiti is an indication of a town in. Light, right? Right? If we did something dealt with, they don't leave alone and said, we don't want to see it, right? And we have expectations that it gets eradicated as soon as possible. We hold ourselves to the same standard as well. Well, I we still got a lot of graffiti on our property and on private property that's been there for years, the. The car wash has got graffiti on the side, it's been there for five years. They came, they lightened it up a little bit, but. It's still there.
Yeah.
And it's.
The rule on that, yeah.
We have a rule on that. We passed it.
On 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 private?
Yeah, yeah, we passed it. Yeah, we did. Um and speaking of, hey, we're on graffiti really quick. We should remove. All those um barriers in the fences along Olympic Highway. Uh Alder and on North Cliffs that just keep getting graffiti over and over and over again. I looked at them, they don't, they don't do anything. I looked at where they sit and I don't see them hitting anybody's house.
Well, it's not just headlights, it's also sound. It was one of the conversations with the residents as part of the development of that plan, so. I'm. I'm more of the mind of solve the problem, don't just take it away because it's just gonna pop up someplace else.
I would be happy to incentivize a program where city staff, public work staff or somebody comes up with a better mouthcap about it, clean those slats, build a build a rig. Come up with a, come up with a method, I mean, right? Yeah, come up with some sort of tool and build it on the truck that you can slide and slap through the pressure losses off the whatever, I mean. They they cover when they're back in, they're back in two days. Okay. On both those hills. Actually, the last one, Alder and Olympic Highway, they. Did all the way down the, like they were just walking down with this spray paint all the way down.
Yeah.
Recently.
It continued up in front of Walmart, the same pattern.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna do their graffiti, somebody cleans it up and then they go up. They're not cleaning up my graffiti and they do it again.
But I think it's also the point that was made earlier in this meeting is that may happen the first two, five, ten, even under ten, but eventually. Right? Like goodwill out, like we're gonna do what is the right thing to do and and have an expectation, so um, yeah. All we can do is keep keep moving along and just deal with it day by day.
And graffiti is something you have to obey right away so people don't counteract or counter counter message, so. Um and mark territory as well, so um.
There there are protective coatings out there now that you can paint on surface, it's clear. But graffiti, nothing will stick to. So then it's just a matter of washing it off.
We'll find out more information from the public works firm about those road projects that specifically identify the slots in those fences, see what kind of commitments remain to those property owners that are adjacent and. They'll provide, provide more.
Yeah, the first half of North Cliff, there's actually no houses. And then there's that three houses where there's some.
You say North Cliff or Olympic Highway?
He said both.
North Cliff. Yeah, okay. Olympic Highway, that was, I know that was in public meetings, the headlights issue going up the road, that was that vocalized from the community. Um not necessarily us and I don't know.
So when you put that sealer on and somebody takes this can of spray paint and starts, is it just bump, does it roll off or?
Yeah, there there's different products out there, but yeah, it will not adhere. You might see a set of mess, but it'll just. Rain will even take.
I mean, I used to know, I used a lot of kilts in the back of the hill press to show, I mean, like. Ten times in five years.
Yeah, we actually. Then I sort of got close and developed specs, building a lot of options for us to seal the brick and have it taken. The brick structure. We didn't fund that, but.
Didn't find the money in the couch cushions?
Yeah.
So there's a sealer on the brick and that's building?
There is.
Yeah, no, there is not, okay.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't find that portion of the project. We funded the the, you know, pipe on that in the corners and. And the siding on the back of those repairs is about double to to seal all the brick.
But of course, twenty years ago, we weren't having trouble with graffiti, so you probably didn't think that that would ever happen to this building.
Yeah, you know, as long as I've been involved in parks, we've had graffiti from time to time, you know, over 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 those years, certainly. Things a little more pervasive than maybe it was twenty years ago.
Yeah.
But um but we've, it's, you know, I think it's um. Maybe maybe a little more bold. Specific to public areas and needs to be implicit at that in dark at dark, you know, areas behind the bathroom in the park or inside the bathroom itself, maybe they're a little more bold and then. Uh take advantage of uh some of the public spaces. So I think this last slide.
Yeah.
Wrap up this project.
So the process is we draft the ordinance tonight and I'm gonna amend the SMC Title eighteen. And the local amendments required, like with IVC and IMC, once the city council has voted and approved. And code adoptions or revisions to the SMC, the Community Development Department will appropriately amend any local adopted codes and reflect those approved changes.
We won't count it tonight, right?
No.
Okay, good.
I mean, you said me, I I I couldn't.
And when you start looking through IPMC, you'll see even there's folded text in brackets that says insert jurisdiction requirement here. So like the grass, for example, it doesn't prescribe the grass. I just looked it up again to make sure that before I said this again, but it doesn't prescribe, it says literally insert jur- jurisdiction requirement, so. We'll come to you with a recommendation. What the foundation needs to look like. We'll, we'll put in the work on what the local.
That'll get a couple of it.
No, but yeah, I I mean, I I would, I would rather have another study session with that book in front of all of us and we'd go through it. Is where I would like to be, but. I'm one.
Do you want to see?
Say yes to. Get on the cat, we're not gonna be here.
Yeah.
Maybe six is open.
What? We'll be on the other side of the podium.
So why do you use that with the draft ordinance or without? You want to start with the draft ordinance to see what it looks like?
As long as it's a study session and we're able to go through that and then see what what you're recommending and what the books, it's it's in the books as well, yeah.
Absolutely. And we'll, we'll certainly get you a copy that I think we would like to, right?
I have it on the here.
Yeah.
Cause I've studied through it.
Sure, yeah, so we can get your electronic version in your free time.
I just want to make sure that what our intentions are, the same intentions that are gonna happen twenty years down the road.
Yeah.
You know, that we're not creating something that's. I'll give you an example. I lived in H A once where I got fined because my shed was brown and my house was blue. That wasn't that in the ordinance when I bought the house, but that happened throughout the years, you know, that things, so. People get different, boards change. You know, so I mean, I I got actually got a fine for having moss on my group as well once, you know, and it wasn't very much moss. Uh.
Absolutely, you know, it it Eric's Eric's points well taken, right? Yeah, no, we don't, that's not our our goal, right? But the. Uh the re- the reality of it is, you know, the average building in Shelton, whether it's residential or commercial, is thirty to forty years old, right? And you can look at this all this data on the assessors website, housing characteristics, you can see the quality and condition and there's two and three, right? Quality is a fair point and condition or uh. Excuse me, condition is fair, quality is bully, right? Not great, not poor. But we're right in the middle, right? And so, yeah, if you're, you renovate homes, you think, right? Like this town is ripe for for that, right? And I pushing people to that point, I think, you know, during pandemic, lots of people were working on their homes, lots of people were spending money on that, that was great, right? And um we want to kind of keep incentivizing a way uh. Continue to maintain the rock. Yeah, good. It's good for the community, it's good for everybody, it's good for you too.
Alright, so let's try to get some consensus for staff here. What would you like to go with this?
Absolutely, move forward at this point.
Moving forward how?
Well, I think as as was described, we'll have the ordinance, we'll have another study session. Take it from there.
Kathy.
Well, I won't be here, but move forward.
Same, same with the study session?
Yeah.
Same, it's fine.
Okay.
Study session.
I generally agree with that as well.
Okay.
Good, yeah.
Alright.
It it's beneficial for us, right? It's it's not for non-staff, I think it's beneficial, I have this sort of conversation and that, so.
I think it's good democracy, people get to see how sausage is made and it's not as ugly as people think, but it's weird.
True, I'm excited for you to check it. I think you like a lot of what's in there, the 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 way out of it. I I like you taking your time too, this. Yeah, I I don't like my 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 twice a year.
You're right. This higher guy, he's got the trees down, he'll ruin your backyard and you won't have his lawn.
Oh, no. Well, Mr. Mayor, we're halfway through time and we still have two more items, so. Jump us in here.
Alright. Oh, yes, we haven't, I was gonna say, go go ahead, you have another item. Got different some high limits. Get me all excited here, you know?
Those types of limits.
Okay, uh so we were requested to bring uh study stuff, maybe to talk about possibly increasing height limits through town and what that would look like, what's kind of the rationale? So um we'll just kind of go over some terminology and then uh kind of where things exist spatially and then uh look for some policy direction. Uh keeping in mind that we can make changes now in advance of our comprehensive plan or we can. Roll this into things that we consider for the comprehensive plan that need to be adopted after. So if there's like an urgency to do it before the comprehensive plan, consider that or we can um. You know, wait until we're making the amendments that maybe it happened to Arizona until they come out of our comprehensive plan updates. So that's a year and a half from now. That we would start that process. So it 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 depends on the urgency with which you guys think that we need to address this issue, but we'll go ahead and start from here. So just kind of how we measure height, um it's, you know, as we define it, the vertical distance from the average grade of the building site to. The highest point of the roof or flat roofs, or it's the average of like a a ridge, gable, gambrel, whatever. So I kind of drew where the red line is there. I mean, if it's if it's P roof, you know, it would be um to about half of that point, so. Um that's how we measure height, which is important because as buildings have taller, we were joking around about it the other day, like A frames are entirely pitched roof. And so the height on an A frame would technically be more than uh the height on a flat roof building uh comparable size, so. Um then you, what this does allow for is uh like turrets and different kinds of articulation in the roof line. Um and causes flat roofs to basically be a little bit shorter, um whereas the P roofs kind of. They give us the opportunity to tuck attics in or have um, you know, architectural. Infiltration or something, but um anyway, so that's how we define height. Uh next slide, uh so stories, uh a story is uh. Going to the very quick version of this without getting into, you know, if we're on sloping, you know, uh properties with daylight basements, but not generally. If it's entirely low grade, um it's not a story. Uh if it's up in the attic uh kind of level, it might be a story. It depends on the roof and the structure and habitable space and things like that. Uh the key being the space between such floor and the ceiling next above it. So if there's not a floor, it's like a rafter kind of attic, there's nothing to find floor, a lot of people's attics like our attic. Um you know, it's not a, it's not a floor or a story, but if we were to put decking over our attic in spaces where we've you've got eight feet of head height up in our attic. Pretty steeply pitched roof, um it it could be an additional story. Do we even need to have a story definition? Um it is a policy question, we'll talk a little bit more about later. Um what did that get us uh versus just having high. Design regulations, so next slide please. So current height limits um vary by zone. Typically, it's about thirty five feet and two stories throughout most of the town. Um within the public service zone and the airport zones, it's a little bit higher at forty five feet, sixty feet. Um but generally speaking, it's thirty five and two. Uh in the downtown, it's thirty five and three, so it's the same height limit, but you're supposed to get an extra story in there. Um anyway, uh next slide please.
So public service must be this building. An accounting for how.
Overlay, public service overlay in through the downtown, that's the uh county campus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's not much of it correct, no. Um so just to to show the zoning map again, just kind of see, most of the town is neighborhood residential, that's our catchall residential zone that includes everything from. Uh apartment complexes to single family zoning to duplexes, the eighty's and that kind of stuff. Um the downtown area is mostly the the CRV and downtown zones, and so they have different regulations. But as you can see in the previous slide, it's generally about the same thing that's uh throughout. Uh next slide, please. This table is a little much, but just basically to to summarize that. A direction that we were thinking of heading this is uh, you know, if we're going to change the height limit, if we're going to increase it, what do we increase it to? Um and I think to think about is uh going by construction type. So within International Building Code, associated codes. Um can we define what the types of constructions are, everything from type five. Roman, it won't be construction, which is just wood frame standard houses all the way to uh types one and two, which are, you know, like your steel frame, glass buildings, completely not combustible construction. Concrete, things like that. Um so within those, um it's hard to see on this slide, but generally. Um each of those uh types of construction has a height limit that's associated with it. You can only go to that height with that type of construction. If you want a taller building, you need to move up the scale in the level of fire resistance that you're defining. Uh next slide, please. So kind of coming to the end of like the the slideshow part of it, but you know, uh for example, one recommendation, going back to that last table. Um there's uh the possibility of let's let's tie the height limit to the most common likely type of construction uh in that zone. So for example, um there's there's type five A or B, which as I talked to Sean earlier this morning. A A is for more protective and B is for less protective. Um and and that's not really well defined, I understand you.
It's again, it's defined in table six oh one, but um yeah, type A is more. Combustion resistant, right? Uh type. Type one and two, type A, you're required to have four hours. Of uh a four hour firewall, type A, type three. Uh or I'm sorry, and then B and type one or two, three hours. Essentially, if you. Five is uh generally what we see, right? Wood frame construction, everything under the sun falls under uh. Five. So A would be two hour fire resistance, B would be ones, you see that like in a duplex, that that party wall is, that's. Prescriptively required to be a two hour wall between those units. But then, if even if you have a duplex, the code allows you to reduce that to a one hour firewall, but then it's sprinkler systems. Uh and it'd be the T D system, but of course. The contractors, they don't want to put in a sprinkler system, they have to, so we always see the two hour wall.
Thank you for interrupting that. So so as we're talking about what is an appropriate height limit, um if if we're going to see commercial type. Construction mixed, used construction, things like that, that's typically like type two construction. Uh we would probably never see type one construction here in town, as I understand, that's more like like the big buildings in Seattle, skyscrapers, in metal conference, steel kind of stuff. Um so very likely the the highest level of of construction you can see here is type two. Um and so with type A, uh you get to sixty five feet or type B, you get fifty five feet, so um you know, while that's. A lot more than we're currently seeing in our downtown, that does go to the the concerns that at least council brought up, which is, you know, we want to see more. Growth, we need to help make it pencil a little bit more, get all the regulations and everything with it. If can we do that by increasing height in a way that's, you know. Sixty five feet or fifty five feet, either of those, we were to pick one of those for our downtown and commercial zoning, you know, is is that appropriate? It's it's more than what we have now, but is it the outer scale, it's in buildings, existing buildings we have? No, there's a few buildings downtown that you can see in our current height, it's because they were built before we had those those limits.
How tall is this building?
I don't know, I was on the roof the other day, it's pretty, it's pretty high up there.
Yeah, so it it is legal, I mean, it's.
Oh, I don't know, that's probably thirty five right here, then you.
With the perfect.
Yeah, so even if we, if we eliminated the height limit, it still has to go through here an examiner.
Absolutely, this would be allowed outright.
Okay.
Yeah, for, they have to fill for the code, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of like, what, others, you kind of outline, you know, okay, so heights equate to certain fire protection. Right, okay, that makes sense, right, vertical ladder, access, et cetera, yeah, you probably need to provide a little bit of protection, but, um, limiting heights. Nobody's built a hundred eleven, West Fifty-Seventh Street, downtown Sheldon.
And 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 thank you, I went to bullet number two instead of bullet number one first, because we had been talking about it, but but correct, do we even need a. Yes, anybody.
That's what I'm saying, it's like, no story, no height limit, I mean, obviously they have to build a compatible building that's safe to occupy and. Aesthetic, I think a lot of the stuff is just aesthetics, right, like people don't want a tall building blocking their.
No.
And and to jump onto the compatibility where they do excuse, so that's kind of the key, right, so if we don't have a height limit anywhere in town, and. Uh, let's say on Olympic Highway, for example, if somebody built something that's. Ninety feet, right, I mean, just picking the number, um, and they build it to, you know, the the appropriate level of of construction materials. How do we define the compatibility, it would it would just go through our cycle, your process, it would be by right, and so, uh, but. Going back to like the origin of zoning, it started because there were a lot of tall buildings going in and around, a lot of short buildings, people like access to natural light, uh, shaded out. Ten hours a day, especially in places where, you know, you can get that many hours daily. Um, so. Uh, a- a- as a professional planner, I go back and forth on height limit issues, because I mean, that's that's kind of where zoning really kind of started, um, and it's it's important to make sure that people are getting that light ventilation circulation, you know, you don't want to be the only one-story house left on the street surrounded by. Six-story houses, um, or six-story buildings, but at the same time, like, how do we define that compatibility? I mean, we we it would be a market departure from what we do now, or, you know, it 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 encourages that development, um, and compatibility is. It it can't be accounted for, right, like, either we have a standard or we don't have a standard, kind of going back to the discussion. Um, so, I mean, that being said, market forces, right, probably not even going to see ninety-story built, or, sorry. Or or ninety-story buildings. Uh, but.
Probably won't see more than.
No, like, or land, there's not, there's not a lot of places where like you're gonna go in there and build a one-block ninety-story building.
Well.
Does it, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a little out.
Our go- our goal is to add support one day, and there may be some property over there that can.
Well, that's.
Nine-story building, right?
Nice to take that up and not have to change it again, so, yeah.
Zone, right?
Yep, exactly.
Zoning.
Industrial zones, obviously, are different, you know, the uses are ten, and different compatibility issues, you're not dealing with residences in certain areas.
I get not going into a neighborhood, but a nine-story.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean. I'll be honest with you, I mean, I'll be, you don't want to go against your neighborhood, come on. Until we have that problem, I don't think you need the standard, right, and, well, right now, I mean, we don't, we don't have anybody coming in, building massive commercial facilities in city limits, we don't have.
Is anybody.
Of residential, we're we're gonna be exceeding fifty, sixty feet, now, like, this doesn't seem feasible.
I think that the issue that we will hear, we will hear is the compatibility with residential, or the transition zones, right? Where you have a mixed use right next to residential zone, jump in, professional planner, I've just practiced for a couple of years, I'm pretty well. Um, you have a, uh, you know, you have a rambler, and then right next door you have a transition zone, maybe CRV, and here comes, you know, but, but. Construction called fifty, but, right, we'll hear, we'll hear about that, the patients that happens.
But when they, when we.
They can be able to demonstrate why that's being allowed.
But shouldn't you, shouldn't you be ready in case, and just get it ready, in case someone wants to do a. You know, taller building, instead of waiting?
Well, and and that's the question is, is what is the likelihood of it occurring, do market forces even make that feasible, and are we going to see anything like that? I mean, it would, it would have to be a really interesting, perfect storm for someone to say that that pencil's here. Um, but that being said, it's it's not impossible, it's not a hardly wrong.
Where, where already had a developer wanting to build a three-story apartment here already, and and pulled out of their two-story because it did pencil out for them, and three stories may have. That's, that's one thing, and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And and the issue with that was due to some loose interpretation of the word compatibility with the existing neighborhood. Um, whereas if we just said three stories and height is compatible, we have to find that, that there's no height limit, we do not have a problem with this, you know, they may have about a three or four story, and that. Might have gotten us some housing.
Because when we were talking about the workforce housing project, we were talking about a lot of mixed use in there, we were talking about houses, we were talking about apartments and townhouses, and.
With the majority of lots that you can build.
You can make.
Town.
Yeah.
To 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 be limited and only do that three stories, especially if you're in a CRV area where you have to do commercial, or downtown area, I'm sorry, you have, you have to do commercial on the bottom.
Yeah.
So if you're not even putting housing on the bottom floor, so now you're.
Can we endure it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, it's.
And it's how do we marry that financial feasibility for development and. As a way to get density, that's what we're talking about here, right?
Well, we.
We are definitely under inventory for housing, um, not just in this community. Um, but it's something that we need to look at, I I'm sure there will be some concerns specifically, of course, residential, but specifically historic residential, um, what that might look like, so, um. But, I mean, it seems. A bit.
Identifying.
Because that's not currently identified.
We currently identify, we have, we can, we can use some design standards too, that.
Right.
Make them, you know, if you want to go higher, sure, but it has to look like your surrounding buildings, if that's the case, or we have.
Ten-story colonial house.
I think I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Hey, let's go for it, one of the prettiest buildings we have in town.
I know.
The general commercial industrial sites, downtown sites, you know, if we want investment, if you want a hotel, right? Currently, our general commercial would have to go through a D A or a P U D of some sort to get a variance, you know, get allowance to build higher than. Um, what our current high standards are, and that certainly is something we don't necessarily want to go through, um, right? We'd like, love to allow a hotel in the proper zone to be built outright. Yes.
Well, and I think it sends the message that we realize that density is an issue, we are open for growth and development in a way that makes sense within our. Existing, um, community, so.
Was it, and would this make it easier for somebody like Paul's equity to build their hotel?
So their hotel, their their first iteration would have required some kind of variance from height limit, or some kind of alleviation, actually came back with a second proposal that met it. Um, and the way they redesigned it, they they were gonna make this, this, um, is the way we define our, um, so.
But this is more or less, though.
Yeah, in increasing that limit will absolutely give us more options.
And on that, though, you know, the market research dictated, you know, now you can do a hundred twenty rooms, so it's not like the market research said a five hundred room hotel either, so.
Right.
So they're not building that, that's at my point, like, I don't think in the next fifteen, twenty-five years, you're gonna have somebody wanting to build a thousand unit apartment in downtown Sheldon, and it'd be fifteen. Fifteen stories or something, right, you know, like, yeah, we might have four or five, right?
Yeah, waterfront.
Right, yeah.
And it's cheap, it's cheaper for municipal services, right, when you increase densities, that that sprawl is much more expensive for all of the rate payers.
Yeah.
Absolutely right, we can build up, we can increase density, it's cheaper for all of the services.
So I guess what I would look for is some consensus on, do we need a height limit, uh, and if, if so, then, you know, do we kind of look at it towards, uh, you know, a minor increase of. Thirty-five to forty or fifty, or do we just not need one at all, because we we decide that it's it's height limit, we don't see anything that's that inevitable. Based on market forces and types of construction, cost of construction, cost of real estate, maybe not just not even see it, and then the second thing, so, so the height limit discussion is one, and then. Should we just remove the story qualification for this, I'm in favor of that, I can't see a good reason for having it.
Remove the what?
The story.
Okay, okay.
Like currently, we limit the number of stories to two, you can have a thirty-five-foot house, but only two stories, um, and so, we, why do you have a third story or a fourth story within that same height volume? Or if we don't have a height limit at all, I mean, it just doesn't matter, so.
Yeah.
Stories.
Be good.
I don't think we need the story definition. My set reaction is we probably don't need the height limit either, but I'd be interested to hear from, you know, our public if there's any concern over that.
Okay, Kathy.
Um. We need the height limit. I mean, we, the height limit is good, I think it's good to do it upfront, instead of wait to see if somebody comes in and then change, you know, the. The rules on it, but, um, I think the height limit, I'm not sure about the stories, but the height limit, of course, I'm not gonna be here, so.
Alright, Joe.
Not strike a bolt, don't see any.
Strike a bolt.
I'd like to unlimited and market it, there's no, no. No reservations here, let's go, let's build a thousand foot.
Okay, and we'll draft and bring them forward. Again, assuming, oh, and and I I guess the question, I just, the urgency, do we want to have this go as part of the comprehensive plan process, because. It it changes the the calculus for our local lands, the housing inventory, things like that, it's gonna go, so, I mean, if you want to, we can, we can do it now, or we can do it along the process, just. I think it needs to be incorporated in comprehensive plans at some level, but, timing wise, I'm sure.
I'll probably just do it now, comp plan's two years out.
Yeah.
Do it now, and then do it, you gotta deal with the.
That's what I'm saying, get it done now.
We'll bring it down.
They're going back.
Okay.
And then back. Night drafting it tonight, that's the theme.
There's no height limit to shelter, well, let's go check out and see how high you can build there.
I mean, it's, yeah.
Alright, uh.
Building code still.
Yeah.
There's still some.
Take away that first layer of, I can't build in shelter.
What, what that likely means is, we'll only see, you know, the fifty or sixty-five, just based on typical types of construction, so. That will be the de facto kind of, but it won't be prescribed, and so, if somebody really does want to do type new constructions, skyscraper, you know. Be the only one in the area, but, um, we'll.
Well, for clarity, um, personally, I'm. Do sprinklers change that, I know it's based on occupancy, but type, I mean, can you go higher? Height limit based on type of construction, and sprinklers are out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's, there's, there's, there's tables.
Sorry, I'm looking on this, yeah, generally, that could, that could apply.
Yeah. Very good.
You know, that could also solve issues with some, some of the buildings that are gonna cost too much to bring up to code to be able to use, because we got like, well, one down there with the staircase, it's too narrow, you can't, you can see upstairs. You know, how do you widen it, well, it's gonna cost two hundred thousand bucks, but buy cheaper, tear it down and build a two-story, uh. New building.
Are you talking about the antique store?
Uh, is that the one that used to be the Harris Shalon?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the.
I remember I had in there once, it's too narrow upstairs.
Yeah.
Not allowed to go up there, so.
Uh, thank you for this, nice and clear, we're, alright, um, saw it last time, and.
We, sorry, oh. Normally, we're on items new discussion, we already know that we have an item new discussion, we're gonna call it D one, and it's an appeal process, and city manager will probably brief us.
Yeah, I think. He's got a lot more details, but as, as we've. Lend the code a little more, and especially land use processes and, uh, latest hearing examiner, um, decisions. Um, we are finding that there are multiple areas within our code that have appeal processes, right? So they are, they are within enforcement section seventeen, there are two, three, eight, two, oh. Sorry, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, so we, we define where our our city hearings examiner, uh, their duties and powers in the appeal process generally in two dot thirty-six of the municipal code. And there's, there's a whole section for appeal process within that, but then within each individual section of the code, like seventeen oh eight enforcement, for example. Uh, eighteen oh three, our building code administration, uh, nearly all of our title twenty dot five oh, which is our zoning, uh. Section that has to do with that, conditional use permits, things like that, uh, it's inconsistent with where in directs the appeals, uh, some of the timeframes are different, uh, some of the responsible parties are different. One goes, uh, the appeal of the hearings examiner decision goes to superior court, most of them actually come to counsel, which I don't want that. Okay, thank you, done, uh, no, I mean, just for everybody.
Quasi judicial processes.
Exactly, uh, quasi judicial processes are difficult, uh, for councils to take, because they're, uh. It it puts you in the very unenviable position of of having to act as a judge, which means disclosure of conflicts, ex parte communications, uh, so on and so on, and hearing rules. Um, it's just better in general, and and we're one of very few cities that still even has this, um, most of them have. Made the transition for any appeal of the hearings examiner decision goes to, uh, the superior court. Um, and so our, our recommendation about found this, and we have a couple of C U Ps pending, and a couple of, of large subdivisions that are coming through and everything, we'd like to get this. Cleaned up, have a consistency, have redirection, have all of that, uh, done very quickly, so we're hoping to add that to the agenda for your meeting nineteen. And we will have an ordinance prepared, um, that basically consolidates all of those sections, so instead of it being spread out throughout the code and having different requirements in each of these sections. It will consolidate, all of it will just refer back to two dot thirty-six and say, follow the appeals process for.
That's more consistent, I think it's, we've found these issues, it's because there's been piecemeal amendments over time, and they haven't always referenced, right, every, every. Instance of an appeal process, so we have, we create those instances, so we can set this up in one place within our code. All of those sections reference one appeal process, it'll be much easier to change if it's future necessary as well.
Yeah, this isn't new, we we've talked about this a couple of years ago, I'm surprised we haven't got it done yet, we we, we're not qualified to make legal decisions, um, sitting back here, and nor do we want to, um. Make legal decisions, so I'm all for moving that forward as soon as possible and getting us out of that, uh, that role.
And again, clear, predictable, and concise streamlined process, I mean, that's, that's been the theme since twenty eighteen, right? So it's really nice to see the staffs being proactive and moving some of that forward, and I agree with, with you, Mayor, Vanessa, just move, move it forward, make it happen.
When the deal happens and it goes to superior court, who bears the cost for?
If they appeal, um, they have to file the fees and stuff, uh, we have to provide our legal defense, which there's costs to us, but. Depending. Awards. We make.
Right.
Fair enough, yeah.
It feels.
For clarification to nineteen, okay? That's.
I'm fine with that.
We, it's, it's, it's a, that's track.
Would that get us?
We can book building next month, I'm all in. All good, yeah.
That's a little more finesse than than maybe this one.
We're gonna touch roll that, some of them.
That's, it's important, I I think, I don't know, if it's that easy, I'm not sure why we haven't done it yet, so, I mean, we've been talking about it for a couple of years, for sure. Or it's come up.
It's a possibility.
Yeah, with, um, yes, housekeeping, but, you know, those housekeeping issues, you know, you know, dust in certain areas of the peak market. I think that's kind of where we're at right now. Yeah, so, now with some impending decisions coming up, and some decision of subdivisions, um, yeah, let's, let's make sure we have.
Alright, cool, that sounds great. Alright, are there any other items for the discussion? Uh, I know that we'll probably talk about this next meeting, but just want to talk about the volunteers at the North Cliff Park, uh. On Saturday, it was cold and wet, but very well attended, I I think I counted thirty-five people at one point, some dwindled. When the snow started coming, but not, not many, not, but it was, it was a great turnout, it was hard work. Um, I think I saw Mark put together and take apart a toy three times, at least, him and a couple of his friends, and, um, but.
He was a train.
Yeah, what, I tell you, it, some of the stuff was not easy.
The person was the user, right?
Yeah.
You got to swing around.
You got to swing around, yeah.
So there was a benefit.
But, uh.
You earned that.
In in the defense of all of us that worked all day on that, the, all the directions were gone by an hour after we got there, they were all wet and boom. So we were like, had to call the guy over that professional and say, okay, we have no directions, what do we do, so all that screw goes there, okay.
We are making tremendous effort, we're happy to have so many, uh, community partners up there, uh, that day to, to create a new park. As Councilor mentioned, uh, last week, it's not open yet, though.
Yeah.
Um, we have some, a little bit of work to do, we have some restoration work up there to do, but it's in, why it went in in December is because we ordered it in June.
Yeah.
Right, so, uh, we had some fundraising activities that took place, um, but it's in, not to worry about putting it in the spring, we can work on restorations, another work going on up, up there, our, and. Big relief bunch, and we, we're really cool, and we're not, yeah.
Thank everybody who who came and and, um, and helped, it was, it was extremely reward rewarding, and, uh. It was actually pretty fun, I, I mean, I lost my fingers for two or three hours when I got home, you know, but, uh, they came back.
For those that don't have rainier, like, mayor.
I had gloves, they just were soaked by.
Over, yeah, for us, it actually wore rainier.
Hey, I I gotta give credit to our Aaron, um, he, uh, he wasn't dressed for it, and and he was a hard worker man, he was in the dirt. Multiple times, uh, uh.
Sometimes wet shoes.
I I wasn't gonna say that, yeah, he fell a couple of holes.
My god.
It it was a, it was a great time, and and the, and the, I really appreciate all of the volunteers that came down for that and and did. It it was a, it was a great time and 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 I really appreciate all of the volunteers that came down for that and and did that for. It's our city coming together like we always do, so.
That's our first new park since when?
At least about thirty years.
Yeah, we have, we have the next one.
Uh you know, it would be interesting how we all really have properties identified at this point, but um. You know, we're probably thinking of a big project in the park and place the place structure in the next few years. It's it's close to thirty years old, road structure, and yeah, I know. In fact, here's a story, I started keeping longer, but uh he and Collins, one of our parks employees, um who's up there helping us. He helped put up the playground in Eagle Park, that was his previous playground construction experience when he was five.
Oh my gosh, that's awesome.
Glad to have him work.
Exactly, right, it's a, it's a great story.
Yeah, just so everybody knows that we had volunteers, I think fifteen years old up to eighty. So, yeah, that's, I mean, we had some teenagers up there that just saw it on a wall somewhere at school, going to do their counselor that volunteered and came down and helped. Great experience.
The city is full of people who want to volunteer, and I think we should have an outlet for that, I think we should increase our volunteer program if and and whatever way we have and not just jumping in with the court people. Pick up trash, you know, so I think we should have a more vibrant um volunteer program in the future, and I hope in the the next year to do that.
And that volunteer program can can help uh fix little things around people's.
Yeah, we can do enforcement.
New steps or a new hand railing or.
We can find that.
Let's just be like.
Yeah.
We pick up houses and move them like bombish people, I don't know, but let's. Let's let's have that spirit, because I know it's here.
I was just gonna add that with um the two large subdivisions that still have proposed, there's neighborhood associated with both of them. Um that provide several acres of park space and for some.
Yes, Eagle Park standards.
Eagle Point, yeah.
Actually, the Olympic Heights um proposal is really need separated out, exercise.
Eagle Point, Eagle Point.
If you want to stay on the list, there are trails or something.
All right. Anyone else have any new items in discussion? All right, thirty six minutes adjourned at seven thirty two P M.